I'll call a meeting to order. Before we start, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm may sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. In the event of a severe weather in the area, the chairperson of the committee will determine if there is a need to evacuate to the designated severe weather shelter. If the chairperson recommends the evacuation to the designated severe weather shelter, everyone should go to the second floor by using the interior staircase. The severe weather shelter area is marked by signage. Please do not leave the shelter until the severe weather has left the area. Also, please be mindful of others evacuating as well. With that said, you had received the minutes in your packets. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the June 25 meeting?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Public hearings. We have a public hearing and possible action rezoning request from Rural District R1 to Rural Arterial Commercial at 4560 Sevierville Road at the corner of Sevierville Road and Temple Road. Roger.
That's correct. It's to be rezoned to the new RAC2 zone from Rural District 1. The property is identified on tax map, 29 parcels 109, part of 109.01, part of 109.02, and part of 110.01. And those are just... The map that Marlene put out there before you shows the highlighted lines, and it just shows those little sections, those last two lots that I mentioned there that are going to be incorporated into a replat, I would imagine will be coming before you. The proposed area to be rezoned would fit the bill for... It is at one of the corners that was designated by the RAC2 zone. It does not exceed in either direction the 300 feet depth restriction. And the replat was going to be to take in a portion behind it to use as septic area and to give it more room to meet the rear setback requirements. This request does fit the requirements of the RAC2 zone. The property is located on Sevierville Road, which was one of the specified arterial roads at the specific intersection of Temple Road, which was one of the specified intersections. And the total acreage would be, by this replat, would be 1.22 acres. This was brought to my attention before it was rezoned that they had submitted a plan to Gary Ferguson to make sure the septic was okay. And I kind of threw up a red flag and I said, hey, we've got to get it rezoned first. So we're kind of starting that process at this point.
It is an open public hearing. Anybody wish to speak to the rezoning request? Step forward and state your name.
My name is John Rush, and I live on Ella Joy... Well, off Ella Joy Road on a private road. First, thank you all for going back and tweaking the RAC2. As citizens, we appreciate you guys doing that. So appreciate you listening to the citizens about that. I just have a few questions initially to ask. I understand that what's considered to be rezoned RAC2 is a house and some of the lots on one side of the corner, Temple and 411. But across the way is Hickory Corner Establishment that was a commercial district. Can you tell me what that zone is currently zoned as?
It's R1. R1. Rural District 1.
Well, but what about across the road where Mr. Hatcher had the car... Is that zone R1 as well?
Yes.
Even though it used to be a business, it's currently R1?
It had grandfathered businesses on it. It was there prior to our zoning regulations.
So there hasn't been a business there for a while. Is it still considered... I mean, is it still considered R1?
Yes.
I mean, in the zoning... So where the beer store used to be and where they used to do the bus work and things like that, that's zoned R1?
Correct.
And across the road where they have the houses is where is R1, but they want to zone it to RAC2?
Correct.
My main comment would be that there's a limited site distance from 411 to Temple Road. And I do understand this is one of the designated areas to have RAC2. But I feel like if a commercial development, the Dollar General store is put there, then that's going to increase traffic at that intersection. And so, well, my main concern is that it not be zoned RAC2 because there could be some severe issues with traffic and site vision and things like that. So that's my main concern about the rezoning. My other concern is the fact that the businesses across the road there on Temple might eventually become commercial businesses as well, too. So I'm afraid that whole intersection is going to kind of snowball. There's already... I guess there's a storage center back there. Is that zoned R12 and the grandfathered in where the storage business is back there?
All the property in that area is zoned R1.
Okay. So that's... So the storage business was grandfathered in as well, too, for a commercial business. It's currently used as a commercial business, I assume. My concern is that whole corner is... The whole intersection is going to become a commercial development, and the Dollar General store is just going to be the beginning of other commercial development. And once again, I travel up Temple Road and I make a left-hand turn, and there's a limited site distance, especially coming over the hill from the left. And so my concern is that a new commercial business there would create a traffic hazard. Can I make one other comment while I'm here?
Go ahead.
321, are you guys ever going to do... Have you looked at doing kind of a special study on 321 from Mariville up to Townsend? Obviously, we're concerned about the Walmart going in down there, proposed Walmart going in down there. But as far as the urban growth boundary going into the county, have you all ever decided... Looked into maybe having a special committee to see about doing kind of some development by being in line with, you know, preserving the Smokies and peaceful side and things like that? So is a planning commission ever considered, putting a committee together to maybe look into doing specific regulations or tweaking the regulations to kind of make sure it doesn't kind of explode into a god-awful mess that it could be?
We have not taken any action to study that, though.
Would you guys consider...
But we will take that as input, though.
I think... I mean, when I spoke at the Mariville City Planning Commission, they mentioned that they thought it might be a good idea to do an urban growth boundary. But, you know, I see a lot of property for sale up through there now, and I'm just afraid that it's going to be a piecemeal commercial development without really a kind of a future planning. And so I would like the Planning Commission to consider possibly putting together another committee. I know you guys have plenty of committees. But to look into the development along 321, outside the urban growth boundary, up to the Townsend city limits.
Okay. We'll take that as input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Anyone else wish to speak to the issue on the floor? Not public hearing is closed. Comments, questions from the commission are appropriate.
Is it public hearing for that one or for anything on the agenda?
No, that's for that one public hearing for the first rezoning request. We'll get to... We do have public input further on down in the agenda. Where did my agenda go? Following the public hearings, we'll have general input. Commissioner... Commissioner McCall?
Well, I also have the same concerns as Mr. Rush. Sevierville Road being two lanes, no shoulders. This piece of property is going into a reverse curve. I think it would also have the site disan issues. Plus, you've got two offset intersections coming in at one place, and I still oppose that myself.
Thank you. Commissioner Roddy.
I voted against the rezoning proposal, and I would vote against this one. Interesting enough, I made the comment that it was going to be viewed as a Dollar General amendment, and the first one we get is a Dollar General. But I'll vote against it.
Thank you. Other input, comments? If not, a motion to approve or a motion to deny is in order. We would have to have just cause for that motion.
Or we have a public hearing, or we have a...
Well, action is in order on our part to send it on to the county commission.
Your authority is to recommend approval or disapproval to the county commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Commissioner Allen, do you have some question there? Maybe I phrased my statement wrong.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand. We're making action on the question.
All right. We have a motion and a second to recommend to the county commission the rezoning as per the request. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Andy Allen?
Yes.
Brad Bowers?
Yes.
David Colville?
Yes.
Ron French?
Yes.
Jeff Hedrick?
Yes.
Bruce McClellan?
No.
Jerry Roddy?
No.
Clifford Walker?
Yes.
Ed Stuckey?
Motion carries. Seven and four, seven and two. With two absent. Second item on the agenda is public hearing and possible action rezoning request from Rural District R2 to Rural District R1 at 8:30 La Quire Road. Roger?
This property is currently R2, and they're wanting to rezon that to R1. The property is identified on tax map, 106 parcel three, and is approximately 44 acres. The applicant has acquired this property by way of will. That will actually divide this property in three parcels, two that are approximately five acres apiece and are located on one side of La Quire Road, and the remaining 34 acres on the opposite side of La Quire Road. The applicant originally just wanted to rezon the two five-acre tracks, but upon review of the property, the slope of this parcel does not meet or exceed the 30% that is used to establish the R2 zoning classification. I explained this to the applicant, and they would like to pursue rezoning to complete 44 acres. I do not have the separate parcel numbers for the lots that were created by will, but it's still shown as a complete parcel on tax maps. I've also hatched the property on the maps included in the report. I have also indicated the approximate location of the property line created by the will on the bigger... It's not the official zoning map, but it's a tax map for your review. And the parcel does already abut properties that are currently zoned R1.
Okay. The floor is open for any public comment input. There's a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to the rezoning request at 8:30 La Quire Road? No one wishes to speak to it. The public input is closed, and it is open for comment by the planning commission. Any questions or comments of Roger, or to Roger, or general comments? Commissioner French, you're puzzled.
I'm a little confused because of the explanation, I guess. Roger, we're rezoning from R2 to R1. And I'm trying to understand this statement where it says, "But upon my review of the property, the slope of this parcel does not meet or exceed the 30% that is used to establish the R2 zoning classification." I guess we're not rezoning... I can't...
The property is...
I'm thinking about it the wrong way. If we're... If it doesn't meet the R2 zoning classification, it shouldn't matter because we're rezoning to R1. I don't...
I was just putting that in there as a statement. Is R2 zoning is primarily slopes of 30% or greater?
Right.
Which is super parks. This is down in the valley. It's actually after it's rolled down off of the mountain back there, behind it.
So you're saying it shouldn't have been zoned R2 in the first place?
Right.
I don't...
Okay.
Since I was the one who did the original map, let me try to address that. The 30% was not the hard and fast rule when we did the map. It was whether it went up into the mountains. In other words, the R2 was a mountainous type of a zone. I did look at slope, but I also looked at the configuration of the lots and how they abutted the slopes. When we got into rezoning is when we set the standard of 30%. So even though 30% was not used as a hard and fast rule when we made the original boundaries, when people came in and asked for rezoning, we set a rule of thumb of 30%. In other words, 30% or less would make it open to rezoning to R1.
I got you.
Okay.
So it shouldn't have been R2 in the first place, odds?
Well, should is a relative term.
The way I look at it...
I was doing the whole of the county, and so those boundaries, particularly along the edge of the mountainous areas, were kind of loose. And people were then encouraged to come in and adjust that if they wanted to.
Commissioner French, I can kind of speak to that.
I don't...
Commissioner French?
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I was just going to comment. I was one of those parcels that when they rezoned, they were... John tended to follow property lines. My parcel actually crossed... There was an erroneous property line, and by elevation standard that they were using for R2, it didn't meet it. I did not come back and get it rezoned, but I could have gotten it rezoned without a major issue.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. It just didn't make sense. I was trying to make sense out of that statement of going to R1, but anyway, I understand now.
You've got a lot of parcels out there that the boundary lines become questionable as to whether it should be R1 or R2. Commissioner Hedrick?
Is staff's recommendation that would be proper to go back to R1?
I'm sorry.
Is that the recommendation from staff to go?
Yeah, yeah. It's...
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Or reverse it. All right. The motion is to send it on to the county commission with a recommendation for rezoning from R2 to R1. Any further questions or comments? Not... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Public input on items on the agenda. The floor is open now for public input on any items, any general items on the agenda. State your name and...
Thank you. My name is Ed Shore. I reside at 2601 Carpenter's Grade Road. I am in my 40th year of building and developing, I think, around 100 subdivisions I've developed. At age 73, the likelihood is I may never develop another one. So I do not have a personal vested interest. I have always been, and I will always be, an advocate for affordable housing. The difference in curbs and guttering and a standard extruding curb is about four times. This has a very, very significant impact. Affordable housing starts with the cost of the lot. And when you add this kind of money, you will preclude some marginal first-time home buyers, some struggling buyers. I am an advocate, I always will be. Not only am I an advocate for affordable housing, I am strong into conservation of taxpayers' dollars. Now, when you have curb and guttering, it's not a matter of will the county have to resurface it, it's a matter of when. Resurfacing on an extruding standard curb, sweep the street and start paving. If you have curves and gutters, you have to mill it down. Great cost and expense, and that is county expense because you dedicate the road, and it's not a matter of doing it, it's a matter of when. And granted, it is far years out. Now, another situation is consistency. If a subdivision is in the urban growth boundary, it's county roads, but you have extruded curbs. It can be literally a property line different, and outside the urban growth boundary, you would have the added expense of curbs and gutters. I don't understand why the county has two separate specifications. The further you get out, though, without the likelihood of sewer, the larger the lots have to be, the more the cost of the property. So I really request that the commission look hard at restoring the regulations to the same as the city and the same as the urban growth boundary. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Shore. Anyone else to speak to items on the agenda? If not, public input on items on the agenda are closed. We do not have any plats for hearings tonight. Miscellaneous items. Variance request by Alvin and Gloria Peak off of Peak Road to add additional lot to an existing common driveway easement. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you will look at the... There's actually two plats. One's an aerial photograph, and then following that is the proposed concept. I think it's kind of self-explanatory. We have it numbered. Alvin Peak Property is what I've labeled Lot Number Two. And there are actually six lots currently along the common driveway. I am not sure of the exact number of houses. I don't know which ones of all of those with addresses are actually used as a residence, but there are a number of them. The Peaks are requesting to cut off what you see as address 832, which is a mobile home, from the other three addresses on what I'm calling Lot Two. 819, 831, and 851 will all remain on one parcel. The outstanding items to be completed are on page three. Number one is a consideration of the variance request by the planning commission. Number two is a copy of the owner's signatures, not objecting to addition of lot on the common driveway. That's not a requirement of the planning commission, but it has been a standard practice whenever a variance comes before the planning commission. I have the language written in there on page two for you. Number three is a submission of a plat with certifications, including environmental health department approval. And just for the record, I would just like to ask Roger if there's any variance, BZA variance considerations due to the number of homes on the remaining lot.
You're not adding any, are you?
No. Okay.
831 is a garage, it's not a residence.
It's got an address and power pole. Yeah. I think it's a garage apartment.
Really?
Yeah. I don't know if it's occupied. I didn't... Wasn't able to check. The planning commission has granted similar variances in the past. You looked at one last month. I want you to remember that one, but that was actually a separate situation. That was a private road situation. In, I believe it was September of 2011, there were two variance requests on common driveways that were exactly the same as this, in that there were multiple homes on an individual lot that were existing. There was a common driveway for purposes of, you know, the owner had, they wanted to divide that, most likely, you know, so they could turn that property over to somebody else. In both previous cases in 2011, the planning commission granted the variances. That's all I have.
Commissioner French?
Got several questions. First of all, has a... Was a variance requested for this piece of property earlier? Has it been a variance granted? Or is this piece of property grandfathered? I'm trying to... My understanding is there's a four-lot minimum of a common driveway?
No, there's...
And this one has five lots on it, and they want to go to six now.
There's...
So I guess I'm trying to figure out if it was grandfathered or not.
The existing situation, if they don't do anything, is grandfathered. Since they're going over the number of four, there's currently five served off the easement. We're not counting Lot One because it has frontage on Morganton Road. So all the other lots are counted off the easement.
Two through six, right?
Two through six.
But there's five lots?
Five... Yeah. Yes. Yes, sir. If they cut this, there'll be a sixth lot.
Right.
It's... They have to ask for the variance from the planning commission. The variance is not granted. I mean, the variance is not grandfathered. Excuse me. What is existing is grandfathered.
That's what I mean. The five lots were grandfathered...
Yeah.
They were there before our zoning laws came into effect.
Yeah, and the right...
Yeah.
Only Lot One and Two had plats done. The others were done, divided, as I understand, by a will.
By the...
Right.
Okay.
We're just acknowledging the grandfathered situation, and they're asking the planning commission to consider the variance to allow the division of Lot Two. That does not mean that Lot Three, Four, Five, or Six can be re-divided. They would have to ask you as well. They would have to ask you as well.
They'd have to, right.
Correct.
They'd have to come through the same process.
Yes, and they may have other problems. They may not be big enough, they might not have enough septic area.
Another question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Item Two. The outstanding items to be completed was the signature page that other property owners signed. If a, if one of the owners did not agree to that, would that preclude the variance from being granted?
Well, no, it's, it's completely up to the planning commission. In past circumstances, before 2011, we had some situations on common driveways and we had a similar form. What the planning commission basically, they, we asked the planning commission for directions. They basically said first come, first served, you know, with, with the division. And then it didn't always become a first come, first served situation because the number of lots has exceeded. But the planning commission has not stopped someone from dividing it based on the fact that one or two of the neighbors disagreed.
Okay.
They're just allowed to disagree, the planning commission still makes the ultimate decision.
Anything else, Commissioner French?
Lots Five and Six, I don't see how they're served off of Peak Way just by the map, but I, it may just not show up on the map. I don't, I don't see any driveway off of Peak Way going to those two, I don't.
Well, Lot Six doesn't have anything on it, from what I can tell.
Lot Six doesn't, yeah, but Five.
And it may be served off a driveway from the back, I couldn't determine either.
Okay, I just thought that's strange.
But the reason I added it on here is because the deeds had the same name from the settlement of this, I guess of the will.
Okay.
So I assumed that they're off that driveway.
We have a motion to approve the variance subject to completion of the outstanding items. Do I have a second?
I got a quick question for Doug.
Okay. Can I get a second before we enter into that? We have a second, all right, comment?
What's the repercussions of approving this? Is there any negative to approving this?
I'm going to leave that up to you to decide. I mean, all of the, all of the units are there, all of the septic systems are there. You're allowing the variance for purpose of, you know, the convenience. You could leave them all on the same lot. I mean, it's completely up to the planning commission. Would you like to speak to the planning commission? You can, yeah, come onto the microphone, please.
Thank you, my name is Alvin Peak. What this is, my son's wanting to build a house instead of have a trailer sitting there. And I want to deed him the piece of property. That way, you know, y'all know, mobile homes, you can move them. But a house is going to be permanent, so. And I have got everybody signed off. That's, that is basically what this is.
Okay.
The, the mobile home's been there for, I'm going to say 21 years. And they, they've decided they want to build a new house, so. I was just wanting to let them have the piece of property with the house that way.
Okay.
Before they build it.
Well, thank you for your input and clarification, Mr. Peak.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention too that there may be restrictions on the house from a health department standpoint. If they're using the existing system, they may not be able to build a three or four bedroom house based on what's on the ground. But Gary will get to determine that. I would just like to mention for Mr. French, the form has been agreed to by all the people. John actually prepared this form and had all these, the proper people sign it.
Familiar with the form, I just wasn't sure if someone disagreed with that, that that would preclude the variance from being. It's not like a beer board when you've got so many residents within 300 feet, all it takes is one. But this doesn't serve that way.
If, if there wasn't disagreement on that sheet, we would have brought it back to you because one of the conditions would not have been met.
Okay.
And you would have to then determine whether you would go forward with it.
I see.
And, and to answer very shortly the question about is there any practical impact of this? Well, probably not. And I say probably not because it's a, it's a status quo situation of existing houses. We've recognized that in the past. This is not a quote, "new vacant lot where a new house will go."
Thank you. Any other comments, input? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the, a variance subject to outstanding, outstanding items to be completed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Long-range planning, discussion on proposed amendments to the subdivision regulations, John?
Okay, I had this, this has been before you for two months now. First was a letter from the attorney saying that there was a problem with standalone common areas. You directed me to explore that and I came back the last time with an idea that maybe there could be joint ownership of all the lots in a subdivision that had, you know, a bearing on that common area. And I passed that by, you asked me to pass that by the assessor's office. I conferred with Mr. Hilton, Tim Hilton, and he, he agrees that that is probably a good solution. The way he explained it to me is that if everybody had joint ownership, an undivided joint ownership in that common area, he could then assess the value of that common area in proportion to all the lots that are associated with it. And then give the common area a residual value that's less than would be taxable. And the number he gave to me was $100. He said that's a workable solution. Now, given that this was something that came from the attorney, then I, I think it would be good before we set a public hearing on it, if this is, if the wording that I've provided you is, is, you know, acceptable to you. I think it'd be a good idea to pass it by the attorney to make sure he's in line with that before we set a public hearing. So this is before you for discussion and any further guidance to me. I would suggest we don't set a public hearing until we get the attorney's final word on that. And I would like to also give it to Mr. Hilton for the exact wording, make sure he's satisfied with it.
Everybody understands what John is suggesting. We went through this discussion, what, two months ago or?
Well, for the last few months, yeah.
The, Commissioner Allen, do you feel comfortable with it? It's what you seem, because you had some reservations to begin with. All right, could I have a motion then to give John the go-ahead to run this by the attorney and the property appraiser? And before we bring it back for establishing a public hearing. All right, Commissioner Allen, is motion, second, Commissioner Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Boes like sign. Motion carries. All right, discussion on design standards for curbs in the subdivision regulations. Who's carrying that?
I'll start.
Doug?
Yeah. You have a memo titled Mountable Concrete Curb and Gutter, stated July 15. Commissioner Hodge asked for us to look into the existing mountable curb that's in the subdivision regulations. And he also asked that I look at curb and gutter or curb sections from Alcoa, Maribor, and I actually included Knox County as well. And that's actually Knox County and Knox City, they have one set of development standards. I don't know what questions he might have had. I did spend some time speaking with him this week and we went through this document. This document actually began a little bit earlier and I did update it and made some changes to it. I tried to make it a little bit more comprehensive and actually point more to the questions as Mr. Hodge actually stated them to us in the previous meeting. There's a lot to take in here all at one time. I'll leave it up to the planning commission if you want to have a discussion now. Or I may suggest possibly setting up a work session with the planning commission and going through this and inviting the highway department to join us. So that we can all look at not just the options, but kind of go through the history and see where we may be going in the future. I, I'll leave it up to the planning commission, I'll answer any questions you have tonight. If we do have a work session, then we can possibly invite some members of the community, like Mr. Shore and other developers, and get their input as well. And we can do that.
That, that sounds like a good idea to me. There is a lot of documentation here, but I definitely want the highway department involved and I would, I would encourage Mr. Shore. If, it'll be publicly announced if we have that workshop. But we'd like to give you an opportunity to speak to the issue, but I think it would be good to have the highway department there.
Absolutely. I, I think there's a lot of good points here, I think everybody has a different opinion. If I, if we just move through the process here, it may get stalled out. There, there is a public hearing portion if you do make a change of the regulations. And if we go to a work session, we could get off the regular schedule and, and set something up and include everybody.
I think that's the way we should go. I don't think, at least I'm not equipped to fully make a technical judgment. I mean, there's highway, we need highway department input. Commissioner Walker?
After Tom mentioned that last time, between the time I left here and I got home, every subdivision I passed, none of them had curbs and gutters. Even Knights Bridge had no curbs, period. And I'm concerned, you know, with, with what we have. And as far as time-wise, I don't know what Mr. Shore's got in the way, but that may be three or four months and put him out of season getting some construction started, I don't know, but.
I suggested.
I'm concerned with him.
I suggested the work session so we could actually move through the process, probably in a more timely fashion than just coming meeting to meeting, possibly getting deferred, not having members here. You know, I think if the planning commission has a lot greater understanding and sits down with the highway department, when we go to another meeting, and I'll let John have some input too. If we go to the next meeting, you might be better informed as to what kind of decision you want to make. And there are options.
John?
I would just point out that Mr. Shore had said he was not going to do any more development after age 71, but that, that may or may not be the case. There is a, I, I understand that there is a building season that, that is upon us and there might be some push for getting some accommodation here. But keep in mind that this, this, the highway department needs to be involved in this discussion. I think out of a workshop, we could probably get enough information and staff to come back at the next regular meeting with a formal proposal for amendment. If everybody can agree at the workshop. Now, workshop is not someplace that you make a decision, but you can get an idea of a consensus from the discussions within that workshop. So I think it would be prudent not to try to draft something tonight. That's what I'm saying. I think at the next meeting, the next regular meeting, if we have a workshop between now and then, that we can accommodate some changes if, if, if that is the will of the planning commission. A formal proposal for change and not just an analysis.
John, from a calendar standpoint, when do you think we could schedule a workshop? Our next standard meeting is the 27th. What's the leadway announcing?
We just need to have, like, I think the standard is a five-day notice. And, let's see. We could get it, actually. Actually, for a workshop, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that we have a, since it's not a formal meeting. Well, let's put it in, into August, I don't think we need to push it. How about August the 6th? Does anybody have a, a conflict on August 6th? That's a Thursday. First Thursday.
I do, but, sorry.
That would give us plenty of time to come back with a formal proposal on the 27th.
Bruce, are you going to be upset if you can't be there?
Well, I, you know, I mean, hopefully, common people make sense, but curious if, if we did decide to go back to the, like, the 12-inch mountable curbs, does that have to go before the county commission to change that?
No, this is an amendment to the subdivision regulations for a standard street.
Because we could do that after the work session.
Well, you can, you can, you can set the public, if it's a work session, you can't take official action. You'd have to call a special call meeting to be able to, to take an official action. It's up to you if you want to make that, but, but keep in mind, we will not have a drafted proposal at, at the workshop. We can have it after the workshop at the next regular meeting. And that will then take a 30 days' notice in the paper and you're probably talking about October before you can take.
Before you can even vote on it?
Yeah.
Can we go ahead and set a public meeting? Go ahead and set it for the next meeting.
You have to have a proposal to put in the paper. You can't just set a public hearing on nothing.
I understand the desire to move it quickly, but our procedures and our, there's, we're not equipped tonight to make a, a judgment on it. We don't have the proper input, so I recommend we go ahead and schedule a workshop for the 6th, have the highway department there. Invite any builders that want to, developers that want to comment on it. And hopefully, we can come out of there with a consensus and John can put together the, the language so that we can discuss it at the next meeting. John, would the 13th give you enough time or would a Tuesday night, is a Tuesday night the fourth better? All right, so the 6th is good.
You want to, what time, 5:30 again? In the evening, okay. If this room's not available, I'll try to get the, the training room. If we can, I'd rather have it in, in full view, but if, if this is somehow used for, for another function, we'll. Oh, BZA meeting, what time they meet?
Six.
Six. Well, we won't be done by six. Is it big agenda? Is anything on the agenda?
Two special sessions.
We could have it after the BZA meeting, that puts it kind of late. 4:30 is fine, look, staff's kind of available at your behest, but it needs to, you need to consider your own schedules.
How much of a problem does 4:30 in the afternoon present? David, do you got a question?
Yes.
We'd have to be out here by 5:30, am I right?
Yes, pretty much. Well, no, by six, they meet at six.
4:30?
4:30.
4:30 on the 6th.
John, not being involved in a previous discussion on this when it can't last meeting, is there anything on the books right now that avoids this happening or is this, I mean, do we have nothing really?
No, there was some suggestions in the memo and Doug, Doug did a very thorough job of researching this. Some suggestion of getting a, a driveway cut permit when you're cutting a curb. But you're going to have a hard time going back on old subdivisions that were designed like that and, and enforcing that. What you need to think about is setting that quality standard here forward.
I would like to, uh, address Mr. Shore and the highway department, and when we have this workshop, that if they'd come up with, um, suggestions on how to avoid these cutouts if we stick with the barrier, because I'm, in my experience with, where I'm out in all these subdivisions, uh, that's one of the biggest eyesores I, I see.
There's, there's some options in there, David.
I, I ran those, but I wanted to make sure we weren't up on the books.
Yeah, I think, uh, if, if we go to a work session, you know, I, I can be real thorough, and we'll have highway department's comments there.
All right. August sixth, four-thirty, workshop on, uh, curb standards. John, anything else? Staff reports?
Let me, yes. On staff reports, I want to discuss trainings a little bit. You have two notices for trainings. I've sent this out by email also. The one on stormwater and drainage issues is September twenty-fourth, which is our next regular meeting, uh, not the next reg- it's the September regular meeting, uh, and unless we, and I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna have stuff on that agenda. I mean, we, you might as well just forget about this one unless you want to opt out of the, the meeting to go to that. Has anybody ever been to this one? The stormwater training? I haven't been to it either. I think there's usually a conflict the way they schedule that. I think they've had it before. Uh, the second one is the, uh, planning commissioner training on private property rights. This is a, the training on property rights is mandatory under state statutes. You need to get one hour of credit each year on property rights. This will give you, last year gave it, I think, an hour and a half. They got it from six to eight. They didn't go that long, but, uh, they gave it, I think they put an hour on it, and I told them, no, if we're here more than an hour, you give us, you know, whatever we got. So I think they got it an hour and a half. Uh, and, uh, so that, that will get you an hour and a half, make, it will meet your state requirement for that. Uh, I did, for those who missed it last time, have a shortened version of that and barely got an hour out of it, although the reason I got an hour is that the attendees had a lot of questions, and it, it got to be a discussion more than a training. But, uh, if you missed this one, uh, you're gonna get the second, uh, level on this. It's gonna be shorter, and it's not gonna be the person who's got the expertise. Dan Hawke is very expert in this, and he, he provides a very good training on it, so I would encourage you to attend that one in Farragut Town Hall on October twenty-ninth, which, which is a fourth, uh, is it fourth Thursday, I think? Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to provide a training. I, I, I noticed that five members have not attended the, uh, presentation on population and speed of life. Uh, those of you who have attended it, uh, you can tell the people that haven't, uh, whether you liked it or not, whether it was informative. I presented this thing about sixteen times to various planning commissions in this region and to other individu- other organizations, including the Bar Association of Blount County, and I've got very good reviews. It's very informative, very eye-opening because a lot of people think things will happen in the future that might not happen or happen differently than they might think. So I'm gonna schedule that either for August thirty-first or September twenty-ninth. That's a third, uh, Tuesday and Thursday, I think. August, uh, no, thirty-first is a, is a fifth Monday, and September twenty-ninth is a fifth Tuesday. So I'm trying to get the schedules to where, you know, we're getting, we're hitting the fifth in the month. But I will schedule it one of those two times, or maybe both, I don't know. And I will invite the, uh, the legislative body also, the county commission, and I've had some interest from, uh, the legislative, some members of the legislative bodies in the, in, in Mariville. So I'll invite all the legislative bodies also to that one.
I, I would like to add a, a comment to that, uh, for those people who weren't, weren't at the last, and I, I liked it so well, I may go back again. I just thought I'd let you know. It, it was a good presentation.
Geneva Harrison actually went a second time, and I gave her thirty minutes credit as a refresher, because I've heard comments of people who've seen it more than once that they get a whole lot more out of it the second time. So if you come a second time, I'll actually give you thirty minutes. I can't give you the whole hour because you've seen most of it, but I'll give you thirty minutes refresher.
Thanks for that endorsement, Bruce. All right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. Public input on items not on the agenda. There being none, the meeting is adjourned.